I call to order the Board of County Commissioners for a work session November 10th, 2015. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the symbol of the flag in the state of New Mexico, this is a symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
Are there any changes that need to come to the work session agenda?
No, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second to approve the work session agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the Commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend county work sessions. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So the first item on the agenda today is a presentation from WH Pacific regarding Grant County Airport Action Plan. Are you guys ready? Good morning.
Good morning.
You might need to push the white button up there on the microphone. That's it.
Okay. Well, good morning. Beth is handing out a copy of the presentation that you'll see up here, as well as a copy of the comprehensive draft report. Here's our agenda that we're going to cover while Beth's handing the materials out. Wanted to welcome everybody to the presentation of the Comprehensive Draft Airport Action Plan Study for the Grant County Airport. The WH Pacific team includes Beth Schatz and myself, Wendy Rannier. The purpose of the presentation today is to basically present the study before the county later considers approving and adopting the study to include an airport layout plan that will be going to the FAA. So our goal today was to go through the highlights of the study and what we've already gone through with the Planning Advisory Committee. Our hope is, in the coming days, or maybe even weeks, we get the final review comments from the state, the FAA, the Planning Advisory Committee that was established for this, as well as the county, the community, anybody that wants to take a look at it, so we can go ahead and get those final comments incorporated. The purpose of the study was to update the plan that the Grant County Airport had in place previously. It's been many years since that time, and the capital improvement plan and the airport layout plan should be based on what your current plan of development is for the airport, whether it's a five- or 10-year timeframe, or even long-term beyond that. So that is to redefine the vision that you have for the airport in the future, whether it's just additional hangars, or whether you're wanting to add any runway, all items that we're going to be covering today. And the other purpose is to respond to the changes in the aviation industry. As most folks know, with the economic recession, a lot happened to aviation, general aviation in particular. Passenger employments were down for a lot of the commercial service airports. General aviation aircraft production, shipment orders, and even flying activity was down. So this study gave us an opportunity to respond to those changes and look at what that would mean to your airport in the future. The key elements that were included in the study were issues and goals. The very first meeting we had with the Planning Advisory Committee, we covered a list of issues that they wanted us to address in the study, and then we established goals for that study. The second meeting was inventory and forecast. We'll talk a little bit more about the details of that, basically taking a snapshot of what you have out there now, and then looking at what the future demand is for your community and for the system plan. And then we had a third meeting to cover facility needs and your future development alternatives, or your options for development. And then finally, we had a fourth meeting to talk about implementing the plan. This slide just gives you a quick overview of what our scope of work was. We have specific elements, and these are the elements that we went over with your Planning Advisory Committee that was established for the study. As I mentioned in the introduction, we talked about goals, the inventory, we documented existing conditions, forecasts, we looked at what's going on in the industry, what's going on in the region, what's going on state, nationally, and we prepared a set of projections for your airport. Based on that, Chapter Three, Facility Requirements, this is all in the document that we just handed out for review. We took the aviation demand, and we translated that to what the needs are for the airport. So when you do start programming and budgeting for facilities in the future, you know what the timing is, when those are needed. Also, a lot has changed with the FAA design standards, so we responded to those by looking at your old plan, and then taking that and saying, "Well, this is what you need to change to comply with the new FAA design standards." So that was all in Facility Requirements, Chapter Three. Finally, we got to the more interesting part of the study, which is where we actually laid out some development alternatives, put together some ideas to address the demand, where you might want to put some hangars, what runway you might want to pave, which ones you want to close, looking at the future new runway, 1331, that was on your last plan. So we took a look at what your options were to include that or exclude that, and what you would do in place of that. So the development alternative session covered that. That's all in Chapter Four in the draft that's been distributed. And then finally, Implementation, Chapter Five. This is where the study talks about how you're going to implement the preferred alternative from Chapter Four. That is your new CIP, what your priorities are for years one through 10, and then also your airport layout plan. The airport layout plan, as you know, is the tool that you'll be submitting to the FAA, so they can approve it and you can remain eligible for federal funding. Here are the planned goals. The planned goals, these are pretty common to any master planning or action planning study for aviation, pretty standard, enhancing safety and security, preserving, protecting investment, accommodating the demand, and supporting economic growth. Airport issues, as I mentioned, we established a list of issues to be addressed during the study, and we also, for the Grant County Airport, distributed an airport user survey. And we had pilots and aircraft owners actually send us their responses to that survey. So with that input, with the input from the Planning Advisory Committee, with some of the issues you had in your last study, talking to the state and the FAA, we compiled this list of issues to be addressed. Then, as I mentioned, we took inventory of your airport. This just gives you a quick snapshot of what's going on out there, all that you're familiar with. You've got 22-based aircraft, and about 24 operations a day. Passenger employments, at the time we started, were 1,670. Of course, that did drop, and then you had tenants that spanned business, airline, private, and government. Inventory here, again, snapshot of what's out there. We went over this with the Planning Advisory Committee, because we didn't always have aviation folks there, so we wanted folks to know what you had at your facility. So before we got into the development alternatives, everybody knew what was there before they started planning, what would be there in the future. Another element that we included was the economic impact that came from the New Mexico Airport System Plan Update Study from 2009. This was important to the community, of course, because when you're talking about investing dollars, everybody wants to know what the economic benefit is. So we extracted this from the study to go over with the PAC and anybody from the public who might be interested in what that study stands for, Grant County Airport specifically. Moving on to the forecast, what we covered with the Planning Advisory Committee was basically what the local trends are and national trends. And national aviation trends, we covered the fact that regional airline fleets had decreased, and the air service to a lot of the rural communities like Grant County were being reduced or eliminated, and that was a factor that was affecting your community. We talked about the fact that while GA airplane shipments in the country had been down significantly, they were finally increasing and showing recovery. And then there was some slow recovery in GA flying. GA, again, referred to general aviation, any kind of aviation other than commercial flying. Then we talked about industry projections, and that it was anticipated that there would be additional losses in rural air service, and that while there'd be growth in general aviation, that the GA aircraft would show slow growth, meaning shipments and orders in the country. However, one thing we pointed out, which is affecting all airports, including Grant County, is while the small recreational private general aviation aircraft flyers are really showing slow recovery, the fastest-growing segment of aviation is business aviation. So there are higher orders for the small jets, for corporate, there are even more orders for aircraft that are single and twin-engine aircraft that are being used for business purposes, because it's just more convenient. And the reason that was so important to your airport is that it's often used as a business attractant. So if you don't have the air service, which you do have, you still have the runway or the facilities for somebody to fly in who is flying for business. So you can cover both bases, the small commercial service, as well as having the runway, the facilities, the terminal building that you need to accommodate those business travelers. The forecast, here's a summary. Employments, 1,670 employments is what you had in 2013. However, that number dropped to 2014 while we were in the midst of the study. In 2014, it was just over 1,100. The forecast, though, is to sustain the 1,670. So we suspect with your new boutique air provider that you will at least return to the levels that you were at before, potentially higher, but we adopted what the FAA was projecting for the airport, which was generally flat growth. They projected a drop and then a recovery. Base aircraft, we're projecting that you grow from 22-based aircraft to 23, and that was adopting the FAA's National GA Aircraft Fleet projection. Very conservative, but pretty common amongst most airports of this size to have one or two-based aircraft increase in a five-, 10-, 20-year period. Operations, again, operations are a takeoff or a landing at an airport, so two operations would be a takeoff and a landing. And so we projected that you would increase from the 8750 to 9400. Again, conservative, but this was also to align with what FAA was projecting for your airport. Airport Reference Code, this is really important to talking about the ALP at the end of this discussion today, and that is what drives all of the design standards on your airfield. So Airport Reference Code, B2, of course, refers to a family of aircraft that are using your airport on a regular basis. What we were pushing for for this airport is to upgrade from B2 to potentially C3, and that's because of the US Forest Service operations. What we've included in the presentation is a sample of aircraft. A, B, C, D refers to the approach speed, and Roman numer 1, 2, 3, 4 refers to wingspan. So of course, you get faster aircraft with bigger wingspans the more you go up, from A1 to like C3, C4. This gives you an idea of what some of those aircraft are, looking at this sample listing. For your airport, the B2, as you can tell, there's a number of aircraft that are listed here, Super King Air 200, King Air's a very common aircraft in the fleet, a common aircraft that would fly into your airport. But when it comes to C3 and C4, that does refer to your Forest Service firefighting aircraft. C4 includes the C130, large air tankers. But you also have the BAE 146, that's a B3 aircraft. So our goal for you in this study was to provide the documentation to you and to the FAA for consideration in upgrading your airport from B2 facilities to C3. And here is a quick overview, again, just FYI information. This gives you how the Airport Reference Code is established, the approach speed, and And as you can see, I circled the typical general aviation aircraft that fly into this airport, or A and B in Groups 1 and 2, whereas the Forest Service goes up to C3 and C4. They actually have some smaller aircraft as well, the BAE 146 is a B3, but they've used some aircraft that are smaller, depending on the mission. Requirements, as I mentioned, we did get input from the Planning Advisory Committee, the county, and then, of course, that user survey. And the bottom line was, there was a need for additional hangars, paving acrosswind, identifying a new runway for the Forest Service because of the constraints you already have with the existing runway, and the difficulty you would have in extending that or even widening that, because you don't have the separation that you need from the building area to serve those bigger aircraft. So we went over the fact that it was important to look at a new runway for the Forest Service. And then just typical terminal area improvements, renovations, paving auto parking areas. We added this slide, Other Facility Considerations, because the Forest Service has been a long time tenant and has a lot of needs, but the bottom line was, they didn't have any future landside needs in the midst of the study that were identified to be incorporated. So it was primarily just the runway. Of course, Boutique Air, in the middle of the study, also replaced Great Lakes Airlines. So we spoke with them, and they indicated their minimum runway length was 4,000 feet, but other facilities were adequate. And then finally, we talked about the infrastructure improvements that would be needed for development, depending on where you would develop at the airport. And this is just to recap what our process was. I won't go through these one by one, but basically, the development alternatives, we identified three for the Planning Advisory Committee. They made recommendations to the County Commission for a preferred long-term development alternative, and once we had the go-ahead on that, we proceeded to finish the study. The highlights of the preferred alternative, we have it on the board over there, but it's also in the comprehensive draft report we provided you. It follows Page 4-10. There's several exhibits, so if you want to see an 11 by 17 of it, that's also on that board, you could take a look. I'm sure it's something you had seen earlier in the study as well. But the highlights are a new runway, just as you had in your last plan, but shifting it north, because that was a comment from the FAA. Their new design standards does not allow runway safety areas from two runways to overlap. And since you have 826's runway safety area extending off to the east, and the new runway 1331's safety area would have extended over top of it, they wanted the new runway to move north, so they would not overlap. So there's an example of a new FAA design standard that drove the change to the new location of runway 1331. The PAC also recommended that runway 1735 be paved, and that the other two runways be abandoned. And we brought up an issue that Grant County, the Commission, and your county, or your airport action plan the last time, identified that had not been addressed by the FAA yet. It's been several years, but we identified the fact that they never changed your instrument approach from the east into runway 26. There had been a recommendation in the last study to change the approach and the minimums, because you didn't have the protected airspace you needed. And there was a lack of documentation as to why that never happened. So we posed that question to the FAA again, and we're identifying it on your airport layout plan. While it's nice to have a better approach with lower disability minimums, it presented a liability issue, potentially a safety issue, so we just wanted to make sure FAA took another look at it from an airspace standpoint, and to make sure the county was aware that that instrument approach should still change, because you don't have the protection that's We also identified the same terminal area improvements in all the alternatives, including the preferred, some long-term development for aircraft parking apron, hangar development, land acquisition. Again, the land acquisition was for, as you can see on the preferred alternative, to protect the airspace off the runway ends, the runway protection zone, and the land you would need if and when you build that new runway, 1331. And then finally, the C3, C4 Airport Reference Code I mentioned, that is the family of aircraft that are being used by the Forest Service. And our recommendation was that that be included for the new runway 1331, but that B2, the smaller aircraft, continue to use runway 26. And then finally, the last chapter of the study, again, this is just an executive summary of what you would be reading in the future, is the Capital Improvement Plan. And I am going to hand this over to Beth. She can talk a little bit about the various projects that are in that Capital Improvement Plan, what the cost estimates are, and how they were prioritized.
Near-term development for the airport right now, we're estimating it approximately $5.6 million, and that's going to carry the airport development through 2019. All dollars that you see are based on $2015. We don't inflate the cost for future development, realizing that as you project through it, it'll change the dollars a little bit, but hopefully not significantly. So the first items that we looked at, and we prioritized these with the airport in the process of developing the action plan, is to reconstruct runway 826. Currently, the plans are being developed to do that reconstruction for the 2017 fiscal year. So you'll see that the costs are listed there, and that's basically for the design fees. In addition to that, the PAC system needs replacing. The AWAS went out of service earlier this year, so they're looking at replacing that in the current fiscal year. And those dollars have been accounted for, and we used a combination of talking to the current airport consultants with the fees that they've developed to do this work for the county. 2017 is when we're looking to reconstruct runway 826. In addition to doing 826, in the action plan and on the ALP, we identified several taxiways that were of concern to the FAA. And in order to bring the airport into compliance with the new FAA criteria and design guidelines, we're having to remove some existing connector taxiways and construct new ones at different locations, so that the FAA will continue to fund the airport. In addition to that, we're looking at doing the T-hanger site development design work. A need was indicated for the existing terminal building to be renovated and bring it into compliance with ADA guidelines. And these costs, though, they're in rough dollar estimates, they're in $2015, and at the end of it, we total it up and come up with a projected cost. And you can see underneath the CIP improvements, we give you the cost, then we break it out on those projects that the FAA will fund, which are under the federal dollars, because they normally fund 90% of all your construction projects. Your state steps in and matches with 5%, and then the sponsor, which would be Grant County, would come in with the additional 5% to accomplish these goals for the airport during the fiscal years as they come up. And your CIP, just so you're aware, we revise it year to year. We sit down with the county on a yearly basis and reidentify the goals and make sure that everything's being prioritized and that the costs are all kept current, so that at any given point, you can be looking at what the airport's going to be doing and how the dollars are working. Your long-term CIP development, which is Phase Two, which hits into the 20-year and goes on to the end of the study, would be to come in and update the utility access and infrastructure to develop the T-hanger area in the preferred alternative development. We need to bring in some water, and we need to bring in sewer services, and that kind of utility support for the future development of the hangar and the users out there. Apron pavement is there. Continually, it's usually a three-year cycle. We go in and we maintain the pavements out there, so we can extend the pavement life. And it cycles like every three years. I know we reconstructed the apron a couple of years ago, so it'll be time for it to have its maintenance, to keep it in good shape and good service. You can also see on here a Wildlife Hazard Assessment. This is a FAA requirement also, where we identify any wildlife incursions on the airport that could cause concern or would be an impact for the safety of the airport, and come up with ways to mitigate those and to protect the investment that the county makes in the airport itself. Then as it progresses down the line, as we go looking at developing runway 1331, we would be looking at doing the environmental assessment for the land acquisition and for the development of the future runway. And then just a general line item for improvements to aesthetics and what the airport looks like and what it presents to passengers and the public as they use the airport. So just a cap over for the CIP work through 2019, we're looking at approximately $5.6 million worth of investment in the airport to bring it into compliance with FAA design guidelines and to provide upgraded and beneficial service to the users and the public. In the future, we're looking at roughly $805,000, and that gets you to the point where if you proceed with developing a new runway, it would go on and roll on to the next planning cycle. So for your 10-year forecast, at this point, we're looking at $6.4 million roughly to bring the airport into compliance with FAA standards, to provide improved user services, and to enhance the value of the airport for the community and the users. So if you look at the long-term part of it, it's just everything is going to be beyond 2024, and that's where we took a rough look at how much it would cost to construct the new runway, and the taxiway system to access it, and we're looking at approximately $15 million in today's market. And then you would look beyond that point at developing the infrastructure to support that type of runway. And like I said, these dollars change annually, because it always gets revisited. This is just a rough estimate for planning purposes to move forward and support the airport as it provides service to Grant County and the users. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last part of the Implementation Chapter is the Airport Layout Drawings. So this is just a quick overview of what you're going to see coming. Based on the preferred alternative that the county selected, there are a set of drawings that translates that preferred alternative into a lot of detail, and that detail is required by the FAA in a checklist. And that checklist requires certain labels, data tables, runway in coordinates, compliance with their own FAA design standards, and if something is not compliant, they have to have a table that identifies that you're requesting a modification to those standards that is very detailed. And these drawings, or these sheets listed here, is what will be included in that. We have a draft airport layout plan or drawing done now. That's what you see on the board there. It gets very busy, so the preferred alternative provides that conceptual visionary look at what you're planning to do for your airport. But the ALP, while it can be a tool for the county in the future to see where you're going to put hangars, wind, and where the runway's going, it is a more important tool for the FAA, because they're going to look at that every time the airport asks for funding, federal funding for a project, because you won't get that funding unless it's on the ALP. So it's very important that we take that time to translate everything you're planning to do onto the ALP, so when you submit your request for an FAA grant, that the FAA can look at that ALP and check that box that it's on there as planned. Of course, the cover sheet is just an index that provides a look at what's included. The airport layout drawing, as I mentioned, is the primary one with all the detail. Terminal area is just a close-up view of what you've got for facilities. The airport airspace drawing, that one is important, because your future runway needs to be airspaced. So the FAA will take a look at where that runway is, especially since it shifted north, and the last time they did airspace on that runway for your last plan, it wasn't that far north. So they'll take a look at it, airspace it, make sure it's So they'll take a look at it, airspace it, make sure there are no issues out there. On the airspace plan, we provide a table. If there's cell towers or anything out there that might be an obstruction or might affect your instrument approach for your pilots into that runway, that's all identified. So that's included. And then finally, something called runway inner approach surface plan and profiles. It's just another airspace drawing. It shows the approach to the runways and gives very detailed descriptions of what those features are. If there's a road there, does it clear the road? If there's a tower in there, does it clear the tower? And if it doesn't clear the tower, what is the obstruction? To what extent is your approach to that runway obstructed? And then finally, the airport property map. Property map to document what you have and what you're planning to buy and who those landowners are. So on the next sheet, that's just a quick look at, you know, what that ALP looks like. As you can see in this picture that we have, it is a very, very busy drawing. So we submit it to the FAA electronically. They can zoom in on anything they need, but it's got all the data all in one place. So it's their quick reference tool. This is the drawing that the county will need to submit to the FAA so the FAA can approve it. Once the FAA signs it, everybody has their copies, then you're officially done. Right now, the FAA is taking anywhere from 60 days to sometimes six months, nine months to review and approve ALPs. So we do want to get that going for you. I think the most it's taken us is probably 12 months on one. But they do try to turn it around in 60 to 90 days or at least get back to you and say, here are our questions and comments on your ALP. Address these, and then let's get another one back in. And as I mentioned, the airspace, this is just a quick picture of what that airspace looks like. It's a bunch of imaginary surfaces that are out there surrounding your airport that need to be protected. And so the goal of this is not just to give this to the FAA, but it's so the county can take this and use it for the purpose of having, putting land use controls in place in the future, you know, whether it's height zoning or noise. You don't have any concerns out there right now. But potentially with cell towers or any kind of construction out near that airport, it's real important to know where those surfaces are. You'll have that as a tool. And basically, that's a quick overview of what we've done. That's just a quick executive summary of what is inside that study that's in front of you. The FAA does not approve this action plan report. That is for the county's use in identifying what your needs are, what your plan is in the future, but the ALP will go to the FAA.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yep. You know, Mike, I think it's important to talk about, first of all, the funding for this. The deal with the federal and state, of course, we don't even know about our own funding and how we're going to be as far as, you know, our taxation and stuff, the monies that we receive. And like Pelt and others, the federal government, they fluctuate. Some days, some years, we think we're going to receive nothing. So we go ahead and involve ourselves into this four, five, six million dollar project. And then all of a sudden, the federal government or the state says, forget it. We don't have that money anymore. We, we're going to not spend it on rural any longer. Any thoughts on that?
Well, state aviation, and yeah, Beth may want to comment on that as well. Okay.
FAA projects are dedicated funds. They, the process starts several years out. Like the design for runway 826, it's been in the system for several years. So what we normally do is in the spring of every year, we file with the FAA and the state what they call an overall development objective. We give them the cost, they put it into the system. And this is several years out. And in addition to the state and the FAA planning their funding out that far in advance, they'll indicate when something gets funded. But the county is also developing their capital improvement plans, and they have this information, and it gets incorporated in the public works budget so that it's being planned for on an annual basis or even further out than that, looking at your ACIPs and your CIPs. So the money for the FAA, though, it's generated and it's dedicated for airport use. And, you know, the FAA usually knows where it's coming from, but we've put the, we've put the information out there, sometimes two years in advance. So the planning process starts several years in front of a project so that when we get ready for funds from the county, the FAA money and the state money is already in place to fund it. We don't do anything until we have the go-ahead from the FAA and the state that the funds are available to pursue a project.
Next question I would have would be, do you see the use of the airport to keep up with the cost that we are talking about to bring it up to standards?
We look at the cost for that. So you have passenger facility charges. Since you're a Part 139 airport and you provide passenger services, so you have facility charges that are generated from ticket sales. You have income that's generated from fuel sales. You have income that's generated from the lease of the T-hangers and from the users of the airport. So all that goes back into the airport fund and is used to develop the airport.
And what if we come to a position of where funding is restricted, and we're not going to be able to accomplish all of what we, that you've come up with and possibly that the federal people or someone else, aviation, may require? Is that going to mean that we're going to have to close down the airport or?
No, sir. No, sir. We work continually with the FAA and the state and the county for these projects. So we know when things will get funded. We know when things will not be funded. And like I said, the FAA is aware of what's going on and how everything progresses. So again, we work closely with them so that nothing's going to happen to shut down the airport.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess my line of questioning would be on the sample aircraft. Currently, we're ready to where we're a B2, and we're looking at trying to move to where we're a C4. And that's simply because, am I correct on that, right? C4? Okay. And that is because of the Forest Service, the planes they're currently using are slurry bombers. But we're waiting until 2024, was that? So it's, we're talking eight years?
Well, two things. Number one, it takes time to get the FAA support. And there are a number of things that Beth just mentioned. There's a lot of pre-planning that goes on. Environmental sometimes can take three and four years. Getting the land acquisition, also getting the documentation to the FAA where they're on board with that. But I will say something we pointed out in the study. When it comes to talking about a new runway or any major cost facilities, not only is there a programming issue, they have to have the time to kind of get the wheels in motion and look at what their alternatives are. They've commented to us on the phone that they're not convinced yet that the Forest Service doesn't have another airport they could use that already has the facilities to serve them. Of course, the Forest Service said that this is the ideal location based on what our geographic area responsibility is. So that has to be ironed out. The reason we documented it in the study, put it on the plan, is to start those wheels in motion. But it may be many years before you've got your environmental and everything done and the FAA is on board with it. Does that answer it?
Yeah, absolutely. Because I agree, the FAA probably thinks that we can fly from Fort Lachuka or Almagordo and not have planes based here, which just slows down response by an hour or so on each flight.
Sure.
That was already addressed, and we had a fuel problem later.
So, okay. That was my own question. So thank you guys for coming. We appreciate your, does anybody else have anything to add? Randy or Justin or?
I'm trying to hide it from that.
Chairman, Commissioners, we have Jane DeSello. She's one of the directors up in the state from Aviation Division. So she came down to watch the presentation. She's been helping us out with a lot of our needs and a lot of the stuff we're requesting. I usually am on the phone with her for a lot of the stuff. So she's a right-hand man to me when we're in our needs or questions, anything I need to go to, I usually go to Jane. She's been a great help.
And we're on speed dial. And to answer your question, I work with Justin in the airports, in the FAA. I will never put a sponsor in a position to commit you to a $5 million project without the funding. That's, I mean, it's, I will never, ever do that. So when we, like our project next year, we already have the fun, we don't have the funding in hand yet, but it'll happen when. You won't sign the contract till the funding's in hand. So, yeah, just to clarify that. So, yeah, but you guys have a great airport. Justin's great to work with. I'm excited for the future of your airport. Any questions for me?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
He's the best we've got.
We'll talk off the record on that.
Okay. Right under the bus. If there's nothing else pertaining to the airport, then we'll move into the review of the November 12, 2015 regular meeting agenda. And I'll just turn it over to Charlene.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, moving on to item B, public preliminary hearing for Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates. Subdivision area proposed creation of an improvement district in accordance with NMSA Section 4-55A-12. Anthony?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this will be the first preliminary hearing for the Wind Canyon Project, the assessment district that we've been planning for quite some time. As you can see, because of the amount of parcels, matter of fact, we, there were so many parcels that we didn't, we weren't even able to put the whole description like we were on previous assessment districts. Although they're just listed in here, Ray does have to verify that the parcel information is correct, that the signatures that we have for the assessment district matches the owner of the parcel. So there was a significant amount of work put into this. And of course, this is the first part of the assessment district after the commission decides to go ahead and move forward. And this is an opportunity for the residents to come and to voice their, if they have opposition to the assessment district, this is the first opportunity to do that. And so the public hearing is required by statute. And as we move forward on the agenda, we'll see the next steps as we're going forward along with the also. I don't know if you have any questions. There was some question about one portion of it on the estimated cost. When we did the preliminary, I'm assuming that we will have some input from the residences in the subdivision. When we did the preliminary estimates, Earl had included a trucking cost that is not budgeted in his budget. We didn't, we didn't realize that cost would be outside of what the county has proposed for equipment and labor. And so we separated that cost in the notice for preliminary hearings so that the residents would be aware that that cost is upfront and potentially would be added to the materials cost. I spoke with Earl. He said that he had already included also his trucks delivering, but this was an additional cost over and above. All this does is expedite the delivery process for the materials and will shorten the overall construction timeline. So that, of course, will be up to.
Additional cost, is it additional cost you're talking about that you and I talked about earlier?
Well, the additional cost that we talked about would be if Earl would haul all the material himself. And it wouldn't. Do we have the numbers? I don't think there'd be any additional cost. It would just, it would just take him longer to do it. This transfer of this $15,000 would be, would then be taken into account using our equipment and labor. So the difference has to do with time. Because of the length of the haul out to the subdivision and the amount of material that is going to take to haul out there, Earl's projections would be a couple of more months before they'd be able to complete the project.
Not money, it's time.
Pretty much. For the most part, Earl's equipment and labor is budgeted already, so it's not going to be any additional cost. But it's just the time. When his equipment and labor actually working on a subdivision, that's equipment and labor that we take off of, off of the routine maintenance.
So the conversation that I had with Charlene and you as far as additional cost to the residents out there, then that's mute now?
Well, that's up to the residences. If they decide that they.
If they don't want to deal with the time, then we're going to cost them more.
That's correct.
That's the answer I need to give them then?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we have about 70, I think 74. I think that they figured that the cost was a little over $200 per parcel.
I'm sorry, I didn't click that.
The difference in the cost would be about a little over $200 per parcel. When you break it down, $15,000 to the, to the, all the parcels that are.
If you go with the cost part, not the time?
That's correct.
$200 per parcel. And how many parcels are there?
I think that there's 77 of them.
Thank you. I jumped in there.
Thank you.
I'm excited about getting it going. I really am. It's been a process, and I know why it has been. I have no problem with that. But it's just, it's good to see it going, and good job.
Well, it's taken a long time, and we know that. Of course, Ray, although he's almost been here for a year now, working with our department, he had to learn it all. And I kind of had to learn it all because I didn't, Lori has always done these. And so it's been a learning process, and it's a lengthy process regardless.
There's a lot of pieces to it. Statutory, you know, finance, of course, the citizens themselves. There's a lot of pieces that got to come together, and I understand that. And I think that, I would hope that the residents out there would understand that too. And then we got to call to the county, that we can't just all of a sudden do all of them. You know, we're lacking, you know, people to do it as far as the county is concerned, the planning and such, and then the money to do it. And so it's all a process, so.
Well, Commissioner, we're doing three of them right now.
I know, it's difficult.
We're doing, you're voicing still for the.
So we appreciate what you're doing. Really do. Thank you. I do. It's roads, okay?
I know.
That's right. So you need to have them all.
Moving on to financial reports. Approved, disapproved the November 9, 2015 expenditure report. Linda, do you want to go over the highlights of that, please?
Mr. Commissioner, members of the board, you have an expenditure report in front of you. This is for the period ending November 9, 2015. The total amount for accounts payable checks is $1,409,875.92. And included in this cost is a check to Madreau, Spurling, Ro, Harris, and Sisk. It's for legal professional services in the amount of $14,640.90. There's a check to New Mexico Emergency Products. This is for the insert for the cargo van at the detention center. And that's for $18,951.29. There's a check to Reliable Chevrolet. It's for a cargo van for the detention center. And that is in the amount of $25,897. A check to ACA Architects. And it's for architectural services for the electrical project at the courthouse. And that's in the amount of $36,816.95. A check to Architecture Workshop. And this is for architectural services for the renovation at the conference center and for the continuum care facility. And this is for a total of $13,517.23. There is a check to Griffin's Fuel Center Plus. And this is for Off-Road Diesel. That's for a total of $16,394.86. A check to Timberland Construction. This is for payment number five for services for the evidence vault at the sheriff's office. And this is in the amount of $115,939.37. A check to Engineers Incorporated. This is for engineering services on the design of the North Hurley Road and the Golloneys infrastructure for the Rolls-Jail Road. And this is in the amount of $24,316.91. infrastructure for the Rolls-Jail Road and this is in the amount of $24,316.91. A check to Ride Express Fleet Services and this is for the September 2015 fuel in the amount of $21,561.64. A check to Ascent Aviation and this is for September and October fuel and this is in the amount of $33,030.85. And also included in this expenditure report is pay period 21 and pay period 22 and this is for a total payroll of $424,033.89, making the entire report total of $1833,909.81.
Any questions on that? Nope, all right, let's go.
Next item which we will add to the agenda is a quarterly financial report for period ending September 30th, 2015. And what this is, this is the actual quarterly report that submitted to DFA on a quarterly basis and we're proposing to replace the cash flow analysis that was in there previously with this because this gives you more of an accurate picture of what the beginning budget was, where we are to date on a quarterly basis rather than trying to project things as the cash flow analysis did. So we're going to try this and see if you guys prefer this. So Linda, do you want to go over that?
I want to find something I understand, right?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this quarterly report is for the period ending September 30th, 2015. And in the general fund, we had a beginning cash balance at July 1, 2015 of $2,721,513. And to date, we have received $1,517,697 and the expenditures to date are $2,136,757. And we're going to see cash balance at the end of September 30th of $2,102,452. In the road fund, we had a beginning cash balance of $435,589. Revenues to date are $153,635. Expenditures to date of $335,921 with a ending cash balance on September 30th of $253,304. In the detention center, it's, the beginning cash balance was $123,146 with revenues to date of $126,799 and expenditures to date of $579,433 with the ending cash balance of a negative $329,488. And we'll be doing cash transfers soon after the year to cover that deficit, that's my budget every year.
So this is the first time I've seen this, as this type of report. So what we were doing before is we were projecting revenues that we thought we were going to get, or we know we're going to get, like pilt and things like that. So what you're going to see is declining available cash balance throughout the year until the copper and the pilt and all those things come in in June and it should make us, if we projected properly, it'll make us back hold, so.
But this is more of an accurate... I cannot talk to save my life. An accurate picture of where we are at the end of today rather than speculating.
Right. I use my red phone.
I see that.
True.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Moving on to new business. Item D, Lonnie Sandoval requested to be on the agenda for an update on the Loma Verde Assessment District and Road Improvement Project.
We're updated at this point?
Actually, that is on the agenda to award. That's been...
Okay, great, that's what I thought.
Received and so that process has been completed. Item E, Silver City Arts and Cultural District Director's Quarterly Report on Tourism, Visitors, Center and Marketing for Silver City and Grant County. Lee Gruber will be here to give that report. She's replaced George. Item F, Officer Recognition Presentation by Cindy McLean, DWI Coordinator. She'll be here to recognize some of her officers. Next item, approved, disapproved USDA Forest Service Grants Application Request for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Cooperative Fire Assistance Grant Program. Randy, do you want to explain briefly what they're applying for and why?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is just a grant by the forest, by the state forestry that comes out every year. I took it upon myself as the DFMO to get with our local volunteer fire departments and make sure that they, you know, went after all the grants that were possible to help with funding, with new equipment and this is just one. It's not that much, it's $20,000 with 10% match which came from other state fire funds. Chief Grove is here along with Assistant Chief Wendy Shaw. So if there's any questions, this is something that we're going to continue to go after. We, Tyrone also applied for the State Fire Marshal's Assistance Grant, Protection Grant and they award $100,000. So it's something that I think the volunteers can benefit from when it comes to equipment. So unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Good job. I know we're talking about some of the chief meetings way back when and I'm glad that you're staying on top of that. Good job with any money that we can acquire through grants and I greatly appreciate it, so good job.
Yes.
So I guess we need to change to item two. It's a New Mexico Energy Minerals and Natural Resources Grant rather than USDA. So bring it on down.
I'm picking it up. It's USDA Forest Service, but it's through EMNRD.
Okay. Actually, yeah. All right. H?
Item H, approved, disapproved, the purchase of a new brush truck, a 2016 Skeeter for the Fort Bear Volunteer Fire Department. The total cost of this truck is $216,059. They will use $12,201.82 from their state fire funds and apply to the Mexico Finance Authority for the balance to purchase the truck. Is that correct or you want to add anything?
Yeah, that's correct. It'll be through the Finance Authority. Just to, in order to use that, they've got to go to the commission approval and then by resolution through obviously the Mexico Finance Authority. There'll be several of those, by the way, coming up as Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department will also be looking for some help from Finance Authority. They were unsuccessful in their grant to the Fire Protection Fund, so we were just waiting on that so that we're not asking for a whole ton of money and then they end up getting money from grants. They was... What is a skeet? It's a, it's a brush, it's a type six brush truck with a skeet on it that's, you know, you slide on the back of the truck and with all the equipment on it.
So it's a pickup with the sliding block?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's what it says here on my agenda, Skeeter.
Item I, approved, disapproved Doug Dinwiddie to the Grant County At-Large Position for the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. This is a letter from Mr. Dinwiddie expressing his interest in that position. Item J, approved, disapproved Benjamin, I'm going to mess up his last name, Rasmussen, to the Grant County Food Policy Council. There's a letter of request from John Song to make that appointment. Item K, approved, disapproved PERA Volunteer Firefighters Adjusted Qualification Report for Robert Joe Avenue of the Cliff Hill Volunteer Fire Department. This is just a report that PERA requires to make adjustments to his, um... Just want to blink.
So what they've done is tried to clean up the records for PERA for volunteer fire departments and they're giving them till the end of this year to clean up any records that might not be accurate as far as service. We did have, I didn't know that the individuals had to go to the commission. I wasn't sure if they had to or not because Chief Grove's also had as an individual, also was told by PERA. Do you want to address that, Chief, about you didn't need to go to the commission?
Well, anything that's required to have a chairman's signature on it and it's approval of something that's submitted through the county, it has to be approved by the commission regardless of what PERA thinks that are.
So then I need to also get on that agenda, I guess, or the future agenda?
We can add you to this one if you want to.
I mean, the documentation I have with me, so I just want to make sure that it gets through, but he was told they didn't have to, so I'm sorry.
So we're going to put Tyrone?
So we'll add Roger on there for the Thursday agenda. Item L is the same thing, approved, disapproved, PERA Adjusted Qualification Service Credit Record for the Volunteer Firefighter Robert Joe Agnew of the Cliff Hill Volunteer Fire Department. This one, I know it is service credit, so adjusting. And do you have that one as well, Roger? Both of those? Is yours adjusting both?
Yeah. My first one, yeah.
Okay. So I'll add both of those for Roger as well. Item M, approved, disapproved, a proclamation declaring November 16th, 2015 through November 20th, 2015 as DWI Awareness Week. That proclamation is in there for review. Next item under contracts and agreements, item N, approved, disapproved, Agreement A15-34 with the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the Grant County Sheriff's Office, 2015 State Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $250,000 and this is for the Stone Garden Activities.
Sheriff, have you seen some, I know the news they were talking about because of some of the shootings by the police and stuff and some of the equipment they had, that in fact, there was going to be some changes that were going to be made. Have you felt any of those changes?
At the moment, we haven't. Commissioner Hall, nothing has changed in our area so far.
So our equipment seems, the equipment that the sheriff's office has seems to be within the realm of what they think we should have?
Correct, yes.
Good, good job.
Next item O, approved, disapproved, Agreement A15-35, New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the Amendment to a Correct Paragraph F of the Grant Requirements, Assurances and Agreements. They're requiring us to approve this amendment which is changing paragraph F to add some language.
Do you have any changes?
It was on what you could, the expenditures on what you could spend it on or not, which we were doing anyway. So they have more paperwork to amend it and go through the whole process. Moving on, item P, approved, disapproved, Memorandum of Agreement A15-37, Federal Emergency Management Agency Integrated Public Alert and Warning System Program Management Office Regarding the Use of Grant County Interoperable System and IPAWS Open Platform for Emergency Networks. Gilbert, would you like to explain in layman's terms what that means?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The IPAS system is just another emergency notification system that will enhance our current code red. It'll work in conjunction with it, actually. It's an integrated public alert system and it's a national alert system and it's to be used by local, state, territorial and tribal entities throughout the nation. So it's just, it's going to enhance our notification. Right now, what we've got basically, just for an example, is when we have people from out of the area, let's say they're recre, you know, out in the hills somewhere and we send out a notification, they don't get it and they see everybody running for cover or, you know, coming into town and this, with this system, everybody in this area will get it. So it kind of expands on it and it enhances it greatly. It's...
What type of communication are we talking about that they would be receiving it?
It'll, radio, television, text, email.
A lot of different kinds.
Everything that you can possibly have, it will include it.
Electronically, we've been, you know, kind of hurting on, particularly in the rural area, some people being able to use their computers and do different things.
That's correct, but it will enhance, it'll cover pretty much everything that anybody could have and even radio, as a matter of fact. So it's going to enhance it greatly. Any more questions? Thank you.
Moving on, item Q, approved, disapproved, Agreement A15-38, State and New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for Capital Appropriation for the Grant County Road Department Facility Roof. This is the capital outlay agreement for the $125,000 to repair the roof of the county road. I mean, that's... Actually, that does, sorry. Maybe get lost this year.
What, nine months?
Yeah. Year and nine months. Item R, approved, disapproved, Agreement A15-39, New Mexico Department of Transportation for the following project agreements. The End Driving While Impaired, which EMDWI, project number 16AL64-038 for $25,050. The Buckle Up Click It or Ticket, project number 16OP-RF-038 for $3,900. And 100 Days and Nights of Summer, project number 16, 16-DF-PTO38 for $3,990. And these are all traffic enforcement that the sheriff's office would handle. There's no change, just anything you had last year, right? They're all the same. Item S, approved, disapproved, Memorandum of Understanding A15-40, Amending the Bargaining Unit Contract for 2015-2017. Article on wages, this is to incorporate the COLA increase of 1.5% for all employees and also agree to a wage opener discussion in the March-April timeframe with the union. This has been signed by the union president and we just need your approval to move forward. No questions? Item T, approved, disapproved, Agreement A15-41, Ratification of First Amendment to Medical Management Contract with Healthcare Partners. As we discussed previously, their contract was expiring at the end of August. What we've done is, this is ratifying my signature on amendments to that contract to actually increase the level of service more so than what we had before. This will provide an onsite RN for an average of 40 hours per week, also provide for an onsite mental health clinician, which we did not have before. Other language in there are some computer equipment that, and exam table, which those are actually in the existing contract that we were to provide certain things and they just spelled out things that they need immediately in order to enhance their services and provide a higher level of service than what we've been accustomed to.
So, if I may, so Mike, so this here, does that address some of the issues that we've been talking about, two casas on? Is some of the things, part of that contract going to be addressing the relationship between two casas and the detention center?
It'll, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, it'll start supplementing what we're trying to get accomplished only because of the additional personnel that they're bringing on now. So I think some of the statistical information, the medical information that is, that comes out of the detention facility is what's going to probably help us at the, at our facility at the rehab center.
Two thousand?
Yes, sir.
No more questions? Item U, approved, disapproved, A15-42, Ratification of Grant County Bus Drivers Bargaining Unit Contract 2015-2017. This has been ratified by the union. This is the new contract for the Cory Caminos drivers. It's very similar to what they are doing now. This would mainly just allow them to have union... This would mainly just allow them to have union representation for disciplinary measures, but it pretty much mirrors their policies and procedures on what they're doing now.
There was a big push now, it was on the news last night about school buses having seat belts and how, is that, would that impact us there too, where we're going to have to put seat belts, or is there seat belts in those? I don't know.
No, there's not seat belts, and this is just their.
It's going to mandate it. It's going to happen.
Okay.
Apparently, vehicles under 10,000 GWD have to have a motor.
No questions? Moving on to bids, item Z. Approve, disapprove, RFP 15-01, request for proposals for the operation of the Coordinated Adult Substance Abuse Center. This is Ron's project, two casas. There were two submittals to the RFP, one being from the Recovery Management Center and Hidalgo Medical Services. These were scored by a selection committee on several different criteria outlined in the RFP. Hidalgo Medical Services were the high-scoring respondent, and is a recommendation to award contract to Hidalgo Medical Services. Ron, did you want to add anything to this?
I just want to recognize that committee, they're here today, that was a lot of work that they went through. It's a very in-depth, that RFP was in-depth, and response was in-depth. And they individually took those and looked at them and scored them. So that was Mike Carillo, Chris DeBolt, and Susie Trujillo. And I want to thank you for your hard work on that. This is a culmination of, so three years, Susie?
Little over two.
Little over two years of work, and I just want to thank, you know, a lot of people to thank, including the county, for the work that they've done on this, and Charlene's been great, and this commission has been great. But all the people that we interviewed, as far as our needs assessment and such, taking their time to come in and discuss the needs, the needs of the community and discussing that with us. And then this community members, Susie's connections around the state, all those individuals that Susie would call them three, four times a week and drive them crazy and stuff, but it's, there was many times we didn't know how far we would get on this, but we're there. And this was a big hurdle. And so it's my understanding from talking to the city, as of yesterday, they'll be able to complete the application for the site. And so that will be going in a hopeless week sometime. And then they'll have to go in front of the land commission for them to make a determination of if we're going to receive it or not. But we're there. Things are happening, and I don't see any reason why we can't meet our goal of opening the doors January of 17. So, we're excited. I would like for them folks to stand. Please stand. Come on. That's a lot of work. Michael? Good job.
So do you have any comments on the process?
So you've got to have something to say. You never lose the words.
I just don't think, I never thought this would happen. New Mexico, I think it will be one of the priorities in our community. And I think we won't have providers, as many providers say, I can't hire somebody because we can't pass a Georgia test for, you know, going down the valley. So I really think this is going to be one of the, and I think that great collaboration with the city and county. Thanks to the city as well, and thank you guys. This is, this is something that we've really wanted to see happen. And I just want to add, this is a dream come true for this community. It's so needed, it's so necessary. And when it becomes real, almost here for now, it's going to be quite the thing.
It'd be a program that, well, already, other entities, Burn Hill County has called us and looked at our program and stuff. We have other entities who have looked at what we develop, and they want to follow it, or pieces of it. And so we're pretty excited about what has happened. Now, it's kind of like you build the engine of a car, and we hope it starts.
Slow down. Okay, next item.
Next item, approve, disapprove, bid IFBB-15-05, North Hurley, RUS Sewer System Improvement, PV Solar Assist USDA Rural Development, Rural Utility Service, E1 Project Number GNT1406R. There were three replies to this bid. The apparent low bidder is Dement Electric of Silver City in the amount of $49,705, plus tax, for a total bid of $52,966,400. And these funds were left over from the previous grant, and it's allowing them to put the solar, solar power on the actual lift station, right? Any questions on that one?
I think we have someone here representing these.
Oh, Gary here, I'll just let you talk about it. I didn't see you.
We have had, we do have dollars left over from the original project, and we're trying to use it for the benefit of the county. This is one of the two jobs we have just bid. The rural development will allow us to construct a solar array out there to offset up to 80% of the low load power consumed at the lift station, plus 20% off the front to try to make up for the long-term degradation of the solar panels. So this is an opportunity to cut back, or to severely reduce the power charge for the lift station. The contractor, who's the apparent low bid, Rob DeMant, also did the electrical construction for the lift station itself, which kind of gave him an advantage because he knows where everything is in there. And he and his son do have a pretty fair solar business in Grant County. So I think, and all of Rob's work is good. When he, when he sets it up, it works. I really do enjoy working with him.
What always makes me happy is to see somebody local get the job.
You bet. You're right.
So if you want to stay there, you can talk about the next item, which is approve, disapprove, bid IFBB-15-06, North Hurley, RUS Sewer System Improvement, Additional Gravity Sewer Connection, project GNT1407R.
We do have a number of households in North Hurley, along North Hurley Road and along Mum Street, that are not presently connected to the, to the community system. We have done away with the wetlands, and we can, we can do away with a few more septic tanks now by putting these people into the community system. This is also an opportunity to get this work done before we redo North Hurley Road, because we don't want to do the road and then dig holes in it. So this is, this is also fund money, leftover fund money. There is, because these bids were low, which was good, we're hoping that we can also use this, the remaining contingency in another place. I know Justin's working with the environment department to try to get formal closeout for the wetlands marshes. And when he gets that, if he gets that in the near term, hopefully, we can also divert some of the additional, some of the remaining contingency funds into closing out the monitoring wells out there at the lagoon stations. We were able to do that at the Tyrone Townsite. We were able to save the townsite approximately $12,000 per well. So if we can do that, it'll save the county cash money. So that's, that's what we're looking at next.
Next item, approve, disapprove, bid IFBB-15-07, Loma Verde Subdivision Road Improvement, Anthony.
Thank you, Sheriff and Commissioners. Of course, the bid process is the next portion of the assessment district that's set by the statute. We went out to bid. I did make a recommendation to the commission, and because the commission has chosen to, to assist with the assessment districts, these two assessment districts, we, I did recommend it all, that we reject all of the bids because we can actually do it for a lower price. And I do want to, I know that we're trying to assist the residents of Grant County by utilizing equipment and labor, but I would like to remind the commission that does put a huge burden on our road department. And as you can see, just in the estimates itself, for this subdivision alone, the cost from Grant County is almost $93,000. So we need to, I know Grant County's, in fact, historically, Grant County has helped with these assessment districts, but sometimes they can be substantially expensive. And so I think that we need to take a look at that in the future. I spoke to the manager about it. Essentially, maybe taking a portion of the cost, doing something to try and offset the costs, you know, the impact to Grant County. And so, but for this, for this subdivision alone, we'll have another one. That's the next portion for the subdivision we just talked about in Wind Canyon will be the bid process. That'll be the next process for them also. So I think that, but I did have a recommendation to reject all the bids, and we will do the project.
Information we've given the residents, did that reflect the $93,000 at that point? Or what did that?
It does. We do separate the cost. The cost, we spoke about this before we ever started these assessment districts, and the commission elected to do this as we have done historically. And so we did separate the cost, and to show the residents that they would have to pay the equipment and labor, or being, excuse me, the materials cost, and the county would incur the equipment and labor. Those are the only estimates that we put forward to them because we do have to go to the bid process to make sure that potentially we don't have a bid that they can do it also. But when you take a look at the bids and take a look at what it takes for a contractor to do the work, the county can always, most always do it cheaper than a contractor can do it. So that has to do with our equipment costs. We're only able to use state rate for our equipment, and of course, our labor costs are pretty much set. So we don't, we don't have any overhead at Grant County, so we don't charge them to do anything.
I personally like to see that we're saving the residents some money. At the same time, I don't like for the county to be competing with local business either. That's kind of a toss-up at that point. But, you know, it is what it is, and we're following the law, so I guess that's the important part.
Well, and the law does, it does give the opportunity for the county to assist. They don't have to, but it does allow for it. We do purchase, I mean, just, I don't know if it's any, has any impact, but of course, we do purchase all the materials locally, so we still, we still assess our local contractors.
The system completely broken, that we can bid against our businesses that actually fund us in taxes, and we don't charge for any equipment time, or very little. That equipment costs us money, just like it costs them money. We're able to kill them on fuel costs because we don't pay all the taxes on fuel that they have to pay. There's just so many advantages we have, and if I was a contractor in town, I would no longer be bidding these kind of projects. I wouldn't give you estimates. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to do that because it costs a lot of money to put these bids together. Earl knows that. He put one together, using the documentation the state allows him to use. It's not an easy deal. These guys spent a bunch of money putting these together and with no real ability to compete whatsoever. And I think the system's broken, and it gets wrong. So I haven't decided how I'll do this on Thursday, but.
Actually, the statute allows the county may assist. It doesn't say shall, because may. So you can simply say, you know, the county's no longer going to do these projects, and allow them to be bid out and have an engineer design them. And then, yes, it will be an increased cost to the residents, but we don't have to be the ones doing the work. It allows that flexibility in the statute.
Okay, and I thought I was clear after the last one, when I thought it was wrong, and I went through the same tirade at that one, that I didn't think we should be doing this. But we'll just have to see what happens Thursday.
You would make that decision, you would make that decision on each project? Or it's just a standing rule that we do not do this anymore?
Well, I think you need to, I mean, what you do and the decision you make, you're going to have to be consistent and get a set of precedents saying, we're no longer going to do this work because of the impact on the road department. It's taking him away from other roads that we already have to maintain. And as what Brett just said, you're competing with local businesses, and, you know, you have four people that put a bid together, and we're just going to do it because what we're allowed by state to pay for our equipment and those sort of things. It's just, like you said, it's somewhat of an unfair process. But if you, if you make the decision on Thursday, whatever you do, I think you need to do moving forward and be consistent.
Now, on Thursday, could we have the actual numbers for resident for the lowest bidder given to us before we make our decision?
The, the increased cost, of course, would be the $9,000 that I mentioned. I think the difference between Earl's estimate and the estimate that we got was about $40,000. So we're talking about $130,000 difference.
I just, you know, I do sympathize with these local businesses. I really do. Being a businessman myself, I know what that's, what that's like. So I do sympathize with them. At the same time, I see where the residents might not want these assessment districts anymore. It's a big lump sum. I could see both sides. Although, I pay to get my road bladed, and it's a substantial amount getting it bladed twice a year. So even a $9,000 on an assessment, that's still not too bad. What is that a, how long is the assessment? Sorry?
I think, I think the last one, we said it 10 years.
10 years? Yeah, that's, that's not too bad.
Only true way to get an estimate worth, for an outside bidder, to do that is to get, is to be able to hire an engineer. I know what it's going to cost for me to go in there and do that job. But like I said, I get materials off state contract, I work with these local vendors, and, and, you know, where it costs me to run a truck for 55 bucks an hour, it's going to cost them 85 bucks an hour. So the only way to do it is to have an engineer come in and give them an estimate where they use the true modern-day cost of what the construction costs on there, because I don't know what their cost is. You know, I know what mine is, but I don't know what theirs is. So it's hard for me to give an estimate for them to come in and bid against me and for them to get the job, because it costs them more than what it costs us.
There's got to be a median there somewhere to where it's going to cost us so much, and how much it's going to cost us to keep doing these projects and complete these projects. So I really feel that maybe we need to find some kind of a cap on the projects that we're going to go ahead and challenge the county to complete. So maybe we need to look at a $100,000 cap or a $50,000 cap. I don't know, but maybe it's something we really need to start discussion on.
It may be addressed some of the issues that Earl was talking about as far as understanding what their bids are and what the cost is for them compared to this county, and they may make a better decision.
The only thing about that is we have an engineer's estimate, but the county will still have to provide an estimate. I mean, if, if the. I mean, if the commission continues to choose to assist as they have done and as the manager explained, you don't have to. It's not mandatory. If the commission chooses, then Earl would still have to provide you with an estimate. I'm assuming it would still be lower. It's just, and the threshold, saying the threshold on the amount of assistance that you can give is an idea too, but I'm assuming that would potentially have to be a cash match in that it'd be difficult to have a bid and have both the county and a contractor working on the same project unless we provided something like junior structures or something like that, you know what I mean? So it's difficult, it's a real difficult thing. It's either you assist or you don't. And you can set the amount of equipment and labor, but I think that you'd have some issues whenever you have both the county and the contractor trying to do the same work.
Well, these projects this size are gonna pull our employees out and have to go take care of this project when they can be doing a lot of others. I know that Judge Hall gets a lot of complaints from people when it comes to road projects.
I get yours too. But we don't answer their phone.
No, I always answer that phone. But yeah, so it's something we definitely, I think it is a system that's broken and we need to start working on it, try and get it fixed.
Pretty much, the impact to the county is pretty much double. You're paying for the construction on the assessment district road and you're taking that away from Grant County at the same time, from our maintenance.
Absolutely. Okay. Next.
Next item, Z, approved/disapproved bid IFB-B dash one-five-zero-eight, Rosedale Road improvements, water line adjustments for the 2014 Colonia's Infrastructure Fund to Mexico Finance Authority, project number three-one-six-zero-dash-CIF, project number GNT-one-five-zero-one-M. Gary, do you wanna discuss this one as well?
I will go with any of that.
You don't know this one from you either? It's on your letterhead. Anthony? Rosedale Road?
Hello, sir. You're at...
The Y.
Oh, the Rosedale.
Rosedale.
This is part of our Colonia's grant and it's the first portion before we start construction. I don't have the bids before me, but I think that JNS had the low bid and...
One thousand five hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's correct. And to this point, our larger construction projects, you know, JNS has always done a good job for us, so.
Any questions, or not? Moving on to resolutions, item AA, approve or disapprove resolution R-dash-one-five-dash-three-six, budget adjustments. Linda?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a resolution to consider for approval. It's for the budget adjustments and it's to do an intra-budget transfer from the sheriff's office, calling allowance, giving the amount of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty dollars and putting it into the non-capital equipment. It's to purchase a coffee machine and the intra-budget transfer in the amount of ten-thousand dollars from the manager's salaries into JPPO for the adult drug court. There's also a transfer in the amount of thirty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and that's for the assessor's office, taking money from their non-capital, from the capital outlet into their non-capital equipment. And we're also increasing revenue at the road department, increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of six-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And this is for, to build a roadway at the Baton Park to give access to the Fort Beard Hospital. We are increasing revenue by ten-thousand dollars and doing a cash transfer from the Capital Projects Fund into the capital replacement program in the amount of ten-thousand and increasing expenses by twenty-thousand dollars. And this is to replace a truck at the road department. We're increasing revenue in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. And this is for the Grant County Community Health Council and we're increasing expenses in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. And this is for the funds that were at the hospital since we are now the fiscal agents for the health council. And there's an increase in revenue and expenses in the amount of thirty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy dollars. And this is for a 2016 meal equipment grant for the senior services, increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And this is for a 2016 Silver City Senior Center renovations grant, increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of seventy-five-thousand dollars. And this is for a 2016 senior centers vehicles grant, increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of eight-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. This is also for a 2016 Gila Senior Center code compliance renovations grant, increasing revenue in the amount of seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars and doing a cash transfer from the airport in the amount of eight-hundred dollars and increasing expenses to eight-thousand dollars for an airport emergency prevention plan grant, increasing revenue in the amount of eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and transferring nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars from the airport fund into the airport annual maintenance grant and increasing expenses by nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for this grant. We're also increasing revenue in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, doing a cash transfer in the amount of three-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars from the airport and increasing expenses to one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. And this is for the airport runway in late phase-one design grant. And these cash transfers are all part of the required match. We're increasing the road special projects for their, 2016 road special projects, increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. We're increasing revenue and expenses for the 2016 Gila Valley EMS Local Systems Improvement Grant in the amount of seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And we're doing a cash transfer from the environmental grocery receipts tax into the solid waste landfill in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and increasing expenses by the same amount. This was for improvements at the main risk transfer station and to purchase additional recycle bins. We're increasing the 2016 restorative justice grant in the amount of seventy-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and increasing expenses by the same amount, increasing revenues and expenses in the amount of three-hundred-nine-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. And this is for the Corte Caminos 2016 administrative grant, increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-six-hundred dollars. And this is for the Corte Caminos operating grant. And increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of one-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. And this is for the Corte Caminos capital grant. So the total increase in revenues is one-million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and fifty cents and increasing expenses by one-million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-ninety-five dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Any questions? Next item, item BB, approved/disapproved resolution R-15-dash-three-seven, Loma Verde subdivision community area improvement district, determination of cost of road improvement. The county will construct the improvement. This is a resolution outlining exactly what we said, if we reject the bids, then the county would do the work. Item CC, approved/disapproved resolution R-15-dash-three-eight, Loma Verde subdivision community area improvement district, portion of cost to assess against the benefit attract. Anthony, do you wanna explain this, please?
Mr. Chairman, commission, all these resolutions, the next resolutions are to identify the tracts and eventually the assessment rule. This one will identify, the first one she just spoke about will identify the portion, if the bids are rejected, that the county will undertake. The second one is to identify the cost to the residences. And if the commission wishes, I guess what I probably need to do if there's a, if the county still chooses to use one of the bids, we also need to have a resolution to identify the total cost to residences. This one solely identifies if the county takes over the equipment and labor portion, the cost of residence would, that's, is a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand. That would significantly change if the county feels that they're not going to, if they feel they're gonna accept one of the bids. So I'd probably need some direction to see what I need to do. And I know you can't make a decision right now, but I'm assuming that what I, maybe Abby can help me out here, whether or not I'd have to have a separate...
One option in our... To change this process a little is you could accept the entire county bid and have the residents pay all of the materials, labor, and the county's costs of labor and equipment, include everything, the entire county bid, rather than them just paying the cost of the materials. That is another option for you to consider. But if I were you, based on the conversation, I would have two sets prepared going both directions, depending on what the vote is on Thursday.
So the lowest bidder, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's the county. Then the lowest outside bid option. So we'll have three options really, I think, right? We'll have the current, then we'll have the lowest county, which is the county, then we'll have the lowest outside bid option. Does that sound reasonable?
That's good. What you're saying is that potentially you would want the residents to pay for county equipment and labor also?
Yes, so that would be one option. So first option would be, just like you have it. Second option would be, we go with the county, which is the most advantageous to the residents, but make them pay for the entire, Earl's entire bid. And then the third option would be to go with the lowest outside bidder and not do it ourselves.
I'm confused on everything else that we do. We are always preached about the anti-donation clause. How can we give away a portion of our equipment, time, labor, materials, whatever, to a resident when we can't give away fifty dollars for an advertisement for the mariachi concert? I mean, there's no difference in my mind.
Well, one, the statute allows it. It's been that way for a long time. I'm not saying that it's lawful, but nobody's ever brought this up. It's just the way we've always done it. But also, as far as anti-donation, we generally have rights to that road. I don't know what the circumstances are with Loma Verde, but we either have, you know, a right of way or an easement that lasts until a condition subsequent happens. For instance, they stop using it as a road. Or we have outright fee simple interest in the property.
Which I think that's what we have in this one, right?
Does that make sense?
I think it's an anti-donation because we've already accepted a dedication of the roadway.
So in this situation, it's been dedicated to our road.
Makes sense.
And I think one of the other issues is these contractors get bonded to do these projects. And if there's any liability or serves a bad accident because of the design of the project, they're responsible. Now, not we're responsible when we do this work.
And there was issues with the contractors was we didn't have an engineered roadway. And so those issues with contractors being able to try and have a bid with just trying to improve the roadway so that we could get traffic on it. And that's usually what we try to do, although we use, you know, we always use a standard design that we use for subdivisions and that's what we try to utilize for the bids and for our construction. And it comes from the Mexico State standards. But as far as having an engineered facility, it hasn't been engineered. I'll put all, I'll put all three on now. I don't know how to do that and I don't know how it's gonna, how it's gonna work, but I'll have three available for the meeting.
One's already done.
Yeah, one's done already.
Item DD, approved/disapproved resolution R-15-dash-three-nine, Loma Verde subdivision community area improvement district, filing of the assessment rule.
Alls are tied in, right?
Yeah, and that is, the next portion is to have the assessment rule, the assessment rule identify the parcels, the owners, the amount of acreage. The Loma Verde subdivision has chosen to split all the costs equally among all of the parcel owners. And so it'll have the assessed cost also on the assessment rule. And just so that, just for the sake of time, the next resolution will be a hearing so that if somebody doesn't agree with the assessment rule or some of the information that we have on this assessment rule, they'll be able to come and straighten that out with the commission.
We'll move on to item FF, stop talking about assessment districts. Approved/disapproved resolution R-15-dash-four-one, adopting five member commission districts. What you have in your packets is a resolution establishing the five districts. You've worked out the three plans, A, B, or C. What we've done is wrote, Abby's drafted a generic resolution and then we would, depending on which plan you choose, we would fill that in and attach all of the documentation for that particular plan to the resolution.
This does, or does not have to be unanimous?
It does not.
It does not.
The ordinance had to be this way.
The problem I have right now is that, I had a citizen talk to me the other day, because we've been keeping those in here recently, the maps, the current and A, B, and C. She said, "I didn't know, I came up there to look, but I didn't know if I was allowed in there and then if I was in there, I didn't know where the lights were to look at it." And so I think we ought to move them back into the main office so that people now can take a look at it too. They had a chance before, but I wanna make sure it's accessible to the public.
Any questions, or not?
Nope. No more.
Next item would be recess and reconvene as the county intelligent health plan claims board. Item GG, approved/disapproved health plan claims for October 31st, 2015. There are fifty-five claims to Gila Regional Medical Center in the amount of seventy-thousand-seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents. There are six claims to Gila Regional Medical Center ambulance in the amount of five-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total of sixty-one claims in the amount of seventy-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents. That's it.
So before we move into county reports, why don't we take about a five-minute recess? We'll stand in recess for about five minutes. Talk back to order, the Grant County Commission work session. Our next item on the agenda today is county reports and we'll start the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Respectfully, submit our report for October 7th through November 6th, 2015. Item number one, the status remains the same. Item number two, our detention facility staffing, we currently have one vacancy. The operations lieutenant position has been filled and that lieutenant will be starting next week. next week. Other promotional positions that'll commence this month, we have one sergeant and three corporal positions that we will be testing and posting for. Just on a side note, the corporal positions is a new position. They've never been in the command structure, and I think it was something that I asked when I came on board that we do this. Previously, we had a second who was just named by a sergeant, didn't have any really... Any kind of command authority. So, I've implemented this, and so now that we'll have three corporals, we'll have a sergeant and three corporals, and they'll also have some kind of supervisory authority. So, thank you very much for that. They also have some additional duties. Item number three, the facility assessment by the association counties been completed, and we'll be awaiting their assessment report once they've gone through and done... Once they've completed all of their assessments for all the facilities. Sorry, they did not give us a date. I suspect probably within about a month or so, we'll be getting that assessment back. Kind of initial review is where... They didn't give us any significant issues that we needed to be aware of. So, we're still going to wait for their assessment report so I can report back to you all. Item number four, on a training update, detention officers, with the exception of six of the command staff, completed their first aid training. The detention staff completed their defensive... All of them have completed their defensive tactics. The two newly hired officers have completed their OC training. Officer Grochovich just completed... Trained the trainer for mental health first aid training. I was made aware of this training, and we were able to submit a scholarship to pay for the cost of this training, and we were awarded the scholarship, and he just came back. And our three newly hired officers have started their in-service training, and once they've completed their in-service training, then they'll be assigned to a field training officer. On our innovation intervention inmate support program, Tracy Gonzalez started yesterday. She reported to the detention facility. She'll let her go with orientation, but actually she'll... She's already started unofficially. She started yesterday, and we gave her tour of the facility, and she will be coordinating with also with the Luna County Detention Coordinator, and so we're very excited to get that part of the inmate support program underway. On a recognition program, Officer Lisa Lucero has been nominated Employee of the Month for October. Officer Lucero is constantly improving in her work ethics, supervising other officers in the absence of a duty sergeant. Officer Lucero does not hesitate to accept responsibility and share her knowledge with... And training with the other officers. And because of her dedication, Detention Center has... She has been nominated as Employee of the Month, and we thank her for her services. Item number seven, average daily population for the month from October 7th through November 6th is 50, six less than last month. High population males is 53, eight less than last month. High population females is 10, two less than last month. So, for the month, this reporting period, 50 inmates booked in the facility, which is six less than last month, and this shows a decrease in activity. The average length of stay for this reporting period is 10.29 days. What I provided for you is some new reports. Hope you were able to look at those, and what I wanted to do is give you a better perspective of the facility, the facility capacity, and how the inmates fit into that capacity. So, the first one is the arc capacity report. This is a breakdown of the building facility and the holding cells by pods. The second survey is the jail report, and this facility's... This is facility statistics along with the inmate confinement information. And on number 11 of this report is the average daily population, and this is for the year. This is from November 7th of 2014 through November 6th of 2015. And then the jail survey of inmate confinement report, and this is the inmate supervised population information. And on number four is the monthly arrest report by month, year, and date of October of 2015. So, I hope this kind of gives you a better perspective, and if there's any questions with those reports, I'll be more than glad to answer your questions.
I don't?
Okay. Item number eight is the monthly total arrests for October 15th. Silver City Police Department, 78. Grant County Sheriff Department, 16. New Mexico State Police, 6. Baird Police, 8. Santa Clara, 4. Hurley, 3. And New Mexico Gaming Fish, 1. The detention facility conducted 14 district court transports. Division 1, we had 32. Division 2 magistrate court, we had eight. Silver City Municipal Court, we had zero. Santa Clara, we had one. Baird Municipal, zero. Total number of medical transport conducting during this reporting period were four, and the total number of transports for this reporting period were 59. And under the jailed utilization and occupancy, we had 29 felonies, 63 misdemeanors. Other probation violations and warrants were 52, for a total of 144. Total hours in custody were $32,726.57. Offense levels, some of the show statistics are the same, somewhat the same compared to last one. And I would just like to... I'd just like to share the accolades with the Substance Abuse Center with Commissioner Hall. He's been an integral part of what's been happening with the substance abuse, and I just want to thank you, Commissioner, for all your part and all your hard work also with the Substance Abuse Center.
Thanks, Mike.
And if there's any questions?
I have none. Can we have any questions? Thanks, Mike. Good job.
You're welcome.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We did finally receive a determination for a section seven consultation on Duck Creek, and we have received our permit from the Army Corps to construct a low-water crossing on Duck Creek. I think it's been about six or eight months, I think, since we first started the permitting process, and so I think that... I think Earl's going to do that project right away. I did attend the infrastructure finance conference. There is a... One of the things that I learned, they have now a reporting tool that potentially could be used statewide. The reporting tool will be for our special projects. We'll be able to input the design, our timelines for construction. We'll be able to input our budget. We'll be able to input our expenditures towards the project, our timeline for completion. All this will be made available online. So, the residents will be able... Not only will the residents, but staff, the state, if it's federal dollars, even the federal government will be able to track our projects and the amount of monies that we're spending and our timelines in a single software. So, I think it'd be a great tool for the commission, for administration, even for the general public, to be able to log on online and see what we're doing as far as our special projects are concerned. So, I think that was one of the highlights of the conference. There you go. Thank you. I also attended the Colonia's training yesterday. We still are trying to find a project that we can live with. I know that most of the projects that we've been putting forward have been transportation projects, and so on top of the assessment districts, we've got Rosedale Road and North Hurley on the books for Earl and his crew already. So, that's, I think, a total of four projects just next year. Now, we certainly may be able to take a look at a smaller project on the ADA compliance in Tyrone. If the project comes, if the estimates are a little bit lower, potentially, maybe we could do something else besides having Earl meet the county match. And I'll speak to the manager about that. I learned a little bit more information yesterday, so... We also, of course, we have the bids for the courthouse coming up. Hopefully, they'll be on the next agenda. Actually, the RFP's going out. I don't know how long they're going to put the RFP out. And so, potentially, we may have the courthouse electrical on either the December agenda or at least by January. We'll have that, so we can get that going. I'm also working on a RFP right now to update a comprehensive plan. It's been since 2004 since we've updated our plan. It's a long time coming, but I think it's a pretty good time to update it. We have... Currently, we have a newer economic development strategic plan. We have a green energy strategic plan. We have an updated regional transportation plan. We have an updated regional water plan, and so what we'll try and do is incorporate all of those plans into our comp plan, add what we have here for Grant County in our outlook, and hopefully come up with a really good plan. And so, I'm going to try and incorporate that into the RFP and get that out, hopefully sometime in December. We also have a lot of roads that we have in Grant County that we've... Through the addressing, we've assigned addresses and given names to roads, but we've never GPSed them, so we're taking sections of Grant County. We're going out and GPSing the roads, trying to update our GIS system. And along with that, what we found is a lot of corrections that need to be made to the rural addressing. We're going to take sections to the rural addressing. We've been contacted by the Village of Santa Clara. They want to update the entire rural addressing system in the Village of Santa Clara. We have Hanover. We have the members area. We're going to try and separate into sections. The only bad thing about that is that... I'm trying to forewarn the commissioners, our ordinance does allow us to update our E-9111 and to make the corrections, but it's pretty unpopular when people have to change their addresses. And so, I just wanted to forewarn the commission that potentially we will have some complaints about what we're doing with the addressing system. It's been a long time coming. We have some new people in our office, and they're ready to go at it and have no fear, and so we're going to take it on full steam and see if we can get these things fixed.
So, the advantage is what?
The advantage is that the corrections will put our addressing system in line with what the system's supposed to have. What's happened is that we have portions outside municipalities that have both the grid system and the mileage system that we use out in the rural communities. Sometimes, we have four or five addresses on one single entrance off of a roadway. What's happening is that we have large parcels in Grant County. Once they have land divisions on those parcels, and those parcels are sold, well, now we have one entrance, which used to be a large parcel. Now, we have four or five residents living on those single areas. And so, what we have to do is name a road, then the addresses don't match up on the original address, and so it's... There's a...
The bottom line is this, is that if you have an emergency, you need law enforcement or you need an ambulance, this here will address that.
That's correct. That's correct. And we have had some issues with response times because of the addressing that we have, and so we're going to try and fix it. I'm assuming it's going to take a year or so before we can get everything done, maybe even longer. We estimated the Village of Santa Clara is going to take, you know, 90 days to form a system along. It's difficult. We're going to try and have some public hearings in these areas, and try and let people know what we're going to be doing, try and take... I'll try and take the backlash, the preliminary backlash, I would say, because I think that the... What people don't understand is that the addressing system is for emergency services. We give addresses out so that we can get ambulances and fire and the sheriff to their house. It's not for parcel. You know, it's not so they can receive their mail. That's their responsibility to ensure that they receive everything they do. Of course, those agencies, they use our addressing system, but there are some errors, and so we... Mostly, when we have a complaint, it's because somebody didn't receive a package, and we explain to them that we... Our responsibility is solely for emergency services. And so, we're going to have... We're going to try and conduct those public meetings and try and appease the public a little bit before we get this done.
Responsibility do we have within municipalities? Because you're talking about doing Santa Clara.
Well, we've always assisted the smaller municipalities in their addressing. The town of Silver City, we don't have to worry about. They have theirs. Of course, they're all incorporated into one large E-911 system. And the Village of Santa Clara, we've always assisted them in their address because they didn't necessarily have a GIS program in the village.
No, it does Baird or Hurley either?
Baird, they assign their own addresses, and Baird... Hurley does not.
They go through the dispatch.
They go through the dispatch, but as far as assigning addresses, and we also assist them whenever we can. Because, yeah, GIS... And then they get dispatch. Used to have a GIS person. I don't think that they do anymore, and so kind of just took over that responsibility to assist with central dispatch. So, all of these people come to us. The Village of Hurley is really, really good, and so is Santa Clara, in assisting with being able to assign those addresses and do everything that we need to do outside of just, you know, putting the address on our database.
How would that affect, like, the assessor and the clerk and these individuals that depend on the addresses? Will that impact? Will that help you guys also?
Well, I think it's not so much... In the mess, potentially, it could help behind me with the parcel, with the mail that they receive. Most of the stuff that we do is for the rural. Of course, we identify the addresses along. They're on the parcel information. When you pull up a parcel, the address is on there, on most of them. Sometimes, there's some issues because they don't... Parcels don't necessarily have to have an address to exist, so... But I'm assuming that by correcting that, it's going to make our GIS better, which in turn makes our parcel information better and on down the line. If there's any questions on anything for voting purposes, that's what we use more often than anything, because in the office, we use legal descriptions when it comes to deeds. So, the legal description can never change, and that's the reason for that, is because the legal description will always remain the same, even if they're assigned a different address, you know, with rural addressing. So, we're covered on the portion for our deeds and things like that, but, you know, we're already working conjunction with them for our voter registration, so if there's ever a question, you know, we go to them, and they're able to find us an address or tell us exactly where they're at within the precincts that we're in question with. So, I think it's going to be helpful all the way around. Yeah, the staff has already come to our office, and Rockstaff has already come to the office and said, "Well, you know, we could potentially need some assistance if you... Once you change the precincts, the voting precincts with the commission." They've already come to our office and forewarned us that there's going to be some issues on trying to develop those lines in Grant County. So, the only other thing I've got is if the RFP is agreed upon on Thursday, we will take a look at the RFP, see if we can qualify for CGPG funds for the continuing care facility. And we've already had been in discussion with DFA. We just have to have meet some certain qualifications for economic development application, and if we can foresee that we're going to meet those qualifications, we're going to have another discussion, and we'll submit an application next month, and it potentially could be up to $500,000 also. So, that could be a big plus. Also, the state has... I was contacted by Engineers Inc., State of Mexico. It has funded a lift station for the Fort Baird facility, and they're currently in design. There are some questions about who's going to own and/or maintain the lift station, and so I have a call in, and I haven't received any information back as of yet. I think that they've been talking about the lift station for a long time. We actually submitted a money for capital outlay for a lift station, and for some reason, now the state has found some money to be able to do it. So, I just wanted to make the commission aware of that project.
It's going to be located within the...
It's going to be located within the boundaries of Santa Clara, so they need to own their own lift station.
Yeah. I don't know what exactly.
That sewer line runs in, in.
The sewer line does. The facility itself, I think, will actually be in Grant County property.
No? Well, we may own the property, but it's within Santa Clara's village boundaries.
Okay.
They did that so they got the gross receipts tax.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't think.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
We don't need to own anything that we don't need to. Okay, Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Pretty much business as usual down there. We're patching on days that are warm enough to pack select. Today, we're out there, we've got about 3,500 tons of base course to haul over there for that Rosedale Road project, and, and we've been working on that. I've got about half of it hauled so far. I've got Southwest. I usually don't order them chips till spring, but because of all the work I've got, I've got them making those chips this winter so I can get them also hauled, so whichever project comes up, hopefully we get on one of them. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Any questions? No. All right. Thank you. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll just be real quick. Conference Center, obviously, is in full swing, and so there are contractor meetings every Tuesday at 10:00. Each one of you and also the county manager, if you'd like, are open those invitations to those, just a briefing on what's going on at the conference center. So it's every Tuesday at 10:00 AM. Yes, sir. And so, obviously, we were here today, but Justin attended for us and get a better update next, commission meeting if we can, but progress is happening, that's for sure. It's pretty much being gutted out, and other than that, I don't have anything senior program. Got a couple of projects going on in Santa Clara and in Hila. The Hila hood will be hopefully started this afternoon to try to get that in compliance with State Farm Marshals Office. We had a leak at the Santa Clara Senior Center, which we've got fixed now, hoping to get in there by the end of this week.
So, in Santa Clara?
We're almost done.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ronalds, yes?
Great, because I've had some calls on bingo. Don't be interfering with the Thursday bingo.
I got those same calls. About the bingo, and we're going to get them in there as quickly as we can. We did find a place for them last week. They were able to have one last week, and so we're hoping to get them. We should be done by today, this afternoon. I'll be going over there again just to check in on the projects. Other than that, unless you have any questions, oh, excuse me, DWI, I know Cindy was here, but she's, they're having the DWI awareness week in Las Cruces next Monday, and I'm sure you guys all got an invitation to that, or if you haven't, you will. And so, other than that, that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Randy. Mr. Assessor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. And for starters, I would like to thank all the veterans here in Grant County and the United States. Tomorrow will be Veterans Day, and Mr. Ronalds, being in the United States Army and being in the United States Navy, myself, I just want to wish a lot of everything for, for the veterans. For starters, I'd really like to thank my staff. They're doing a heck of a good job. Tax bills have gone out, and it has been very busy. Today's pretty much the last day for them to come in and pay their taxes. However, a lot of the tax rule changes have been done through a more cheap appraiser, and things are working just fine. The rural addressing, and thanks to Anthony, on this rural addressing, it's really going to help out of the assessor's office, we're in the process at this moment to have our parcel mapping on our website going through ESRI, and it will be a complete, you know, with the GIS, and it's actually a cost, there's no cost on it, so we're, we're working on it at this time. Still picking up the pieces, however, everything is doing great. We are turned on our deeds at this moment. We haven't had any issues. Every time anybody comes in about our combines and any deed transfers, we're pretty much staying careful right there and then. I will have you an enormous report come January 1 on how we're going to transfer all these properties and how we're going to do these combines, because we have to stay consistent on what's going on. County Manager? We did an inventory at the old courthouse with the tax schedule, and the notices evaluation, it was quite interesting. We went all the way back to 1894, so I will have a report for you later on this week on what the cost is going to be. But other than that, everything is doing great, and like I said once again, I really do thank my staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to mention a little bit about our affiliate that we had a couple weeks ago. A great meeting. We went through some legislation that we'll be working on in the next session. We'll go through the inmate, of course. Commissioner, you'll, you'll get to see some of that stuff. I think Daniel's put in some, some good things to clean up some bills that are much needed in the election code. We visited a little bit with the Secretary of State's office. I was pleasantly surprised that staff there, they seem committed, sleeves are rolled up, ready to go. I anticipate that when and if the governor makes an announcement on the new Secretary of State, that that person hopefully is only a figurehead and doesn't interfere with any of the work, that the staff there is committed, because we've, you know, they gave us their full commitment that they're, you know, everybody anticipates this election to be a huge election. It's a presidential, of course, voter turnout is normally higher for those, so I think they're, they can, they grasp how big this election is, and I can only hope whoever's brought in is the new Secretary of State, that they are aware that staff is willing to work with the rest of the counties and really doesn't interfere with the whole lot in the sense of political shenanigans.
So when do they appoint you?
I haven't applied.
I was going to say. I've sent the last three county clerk's names up to her, so.
It'd be wonderful before this one.
Hey, is that it?
That's everything.
Madam Manager, nothing today? Anybody have seconds? Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those papers, you probably say no.